It is 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order Tuesday, today's Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. This is our 5:30 regular scheduled meeting of the Mowbridge City Council. So Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mound?
Here.
Landrew?
Here.
Riker?
Here.
O'Connell? Yellowboy?
Yep.
Carlson?
Up next, we have Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman Tony Yellowboy to lead us in that.
(inaudible)
Okay, up next, we have Adopt the Agenda. So if there are no additions to the agenda, I would look for a motion to adopt the current agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Landrew?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, next up, number four, we have Approved Minutes of our September 10th, 2019, regular meeting. They're in your packet, so if there are no corrections or additions to those minutes, I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have our Public Forum and Visitors. So if anyone wishes to address the council. Okay, Harold, come on up. Jean, I'll get to you next. Okay?
I was just wondering what you're gonna do with that house on, on, uh, Mr. Oberby's. You know, I was here a month ago and they, he promised he'd trucks and motors and everything. There has been one dumpster taken out full. They brought back a nice clean one. It's full. It's been sitting there for 30 days, plus he threw more stuff out on the yard. So I just wondered what you guys were gonna do.
Is, I mean, are you looking for a plan, or are you looking for?
I'm looking to get something done.
Okay, well, I guess my first thing is, Tommy, chief's not here. Did we not have two roll-offs, or did we just have the one? Because I thought we were gonna put two.
At that time, there was only gonna be one.
Okay, okay. I guess, Harold, right now, the plan is, the county has agreed to let him make his back tax payments?
Yeah, I knew that.
And that's what he's told the county, he's gonna keep working on it. And I guess as long as he is making progress.
He isn't. He's not making progress, he's making bigger mess. Don't tell me that's progress, when the whole west side of it is full of boards laying on the ground again. Don't tell me that's progress. If that's progress, but we're in a lot of trouble.
But doesn't he have to disassemble it to make it back?
I, I tell you what.
I'm.
I tell you what. I think it's gonna take a little higher power than what we got here to take care of this mess. And I think I'm gonna look into that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Harold.
I would just like to say that I do think that there has been substantial progress made on that property.
What?
I have been watching it. And he's, he's doing what he can with what he has. He does work. And, you know, there's only so many hours in the day.
How could he make progress if he's throwing more wood out on the ground, Jade? How could that be progress?
He does have to take the house down.
Harold, come back to the podium. If, if we're gonna continue the discussion, please come back. Jean?
Okay, thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Cox and members of the council and audience. I guess I missed the cutoff, forgetting on the agendas. I appreciate this opportunity. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I just want to emphasize that. At Bridges, we have two different activities coming up. Monday is a fundraiser at the Pizza Ranch, and we appreciate your support and your generosity very much. And also, on Wednesday, at the city park, and hopefully weather will permit, at 5:00 PM, there's going to be a Walk Against Domestic Violence, and we welcome all of you to please come and share, you know, the spirit and, you know, let victims of domestic violence know that they are supported and they are important. Last year, Bridges had 587 shelter days and twenty, for 29 women and 26 children. It would be a wonderful world if that wasn't necessary. But again, Bridges thanks you very, very much as a community and city council and mayor as for every, all the support you have offered us. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Okay, Linda?
I don't know if you all know me, but I'm Linda Meyer from the Mowbridge Rodeo Association, and I want to first thank you for your dedication for being on the board and your diligent work with the Mowbridge Rodeo Association to help us bring our annual three-day event to the city of Mowbridge. We, the rodeo association, understand that you've been going over your rates charged for the Sheerhow Event Center, and we're very pleased to hear that. We are here today to ask you this one time to forgive the daily rental fee during our 75th anniversary of the Sitting Bull Stampede Rodeo and Mowbridge Pollock All School Reunion for 2020. I'm gonna hand these to you, if you want to pass them out. Here sits a five-day preliminary plan for our anniversary coming in July. As you, as you heard, it's five days, not three days, so it's a big event. As you can see, we'd like to have many of the events at the Sheerhow Event Center in the city park, and these events would be at no charge to the visitors. The only charges as of right now will be the all-school reunion meal, the rodeo, and the dances. We, as the rodeo association, do not have the facilities to host many of these activities at the rodeo grounds, and in case of bad weather, we really need a safe haven for our people to go to. The Mowbridge Pollock School has offered us the use of their facilities, but we'd like to keep most of the activities on Main Street. We believe Main Street and other businesses will benefit and bring more tax dollars into the city. So we are here to ask you to consider a no-rate fee for our 2020 Sitting Bull Stampede and the Mowbridge Pollock All School Reunion. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I guess kind of obvious what you're looking for.
Okay.
I, I guess I don't want to turn it into a huge discussion at this moment, but I guess I'd look at the two committee members down there and let them mull that over.
That's wonderful. I, I thank you very much for letting me come and be on your agenda and consider this proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thanks.
Excuse me. While we're still in public forum, does anyone else wish to address the council? Hearing none, I will take us into Department Head Reports. The first thing, well, the only thing we have is zoning. Something I would like to point out down in these permits to the council and to everyone that is here, if you look down about halfway down, and Jade, you spoke on this property last week, and it's the one called P Spotted Horse. And that is actually a property that the city did clean up. We purchased it. We got a warranty deed about three years ago, sold it to the gentleman, and now we're looking at a $92,000 home coming back on to that. If you look at it from a real estate sense, no, doesn't make sense. But if you look at it from turnaround and the speed at which government does move, that's three years. That's quicker than any tax property or anything else. So with addition to that, our ordinance is gonna require that these individuals put in curb gutter and sidewalk. So I noticed that last month's meeting, Jade, you talked about it, how we cleaned it up. So that's actually what's gonna come into there now, based on some of the, some of the things that the city has done. So if that's not the right answer, I guess I don't know what is. Other than that, there's the rest of the building permits before you guys, so if there's any questions, now would be the time. If not, I will move us into the Water Department.
Excuse me, on these violations, is any deed on there that you guys can put when you guys serve these violations?
The zoning officers serve those. The, the police department did not. So we can talk, we'll have to talk to Mr. Martin about that.
Okay.
Any more questions, comments? All right, I'll take us into Water Department. Kurt Schmalz?
Good evening. I'd like to ask council today to approve the hiring of Wyatt Bieber for a full-time employee at a rate of 15.63 per hour, effective 9/30/19.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Thanks, Kurt. Next up, we have Street Department. Ryan?
I'm requesting the purchase of V plow for our road grader that we bought three years ago. I think it'd help out a lot, especially in an emergency or something.
Did we, did we budget for that?
It's not technically in the 2019 budget, but Ryan has really watched his, his budgeting this year, and he has the money to, to support the purchase.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I got one. Well, if you purchase this, when is it gonna be here?
Three weeks, was the last time I heard.
Not by Thursday.
So have you checked the weather lately?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it'd be a good time to ask for it.
Okay, well, we'll be here next year, right? Okay, all right.
So from what I'm understanding is that this was not a purchase that was expected to be made this year.
Correct.
But due to him keeping an eye on spending, he does have the funding to purchase this.
Make the purchase without going over budget.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? I guess hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Up next, we have Unfinished Business. We have the second reading of Ordinance Number 976, amending 11-1 pertaining to service lines and connections. So Heather, did you want to quickly recap that?
This just changes the way we currently handle the curb stops. This will change it so the city will be replacing the curb stops instead of the property owner, and those curb stops will then become property of the city instead of the property owner, making it easier for the city to change those numerous broken ones within the city where we may have trouble collecting, or the homeowner may have trouble changing it out.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Okay, up next, we have Approved Second Reading of Ordinance Number 977 to codify Mowbridge City Ordinance. Yeah, so, yeah. So we're codifying 97, we're, second reading is 977 to codify the ordinance, is correct?
Correct, yep.
So that is where Rick Kane codifies.
Just takes all the ones you guys have approved and makes it into a clean version.
So hearing, if there's no more discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Riker?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, up next, first item in new business. Looks like we have a lease proposal from the county for office space over in the fire hall. Amanda, are you here? Did you want to talk about that, kinda? Sure, go ahead, give us the spiel. You gave the county commissioners a spiel, I think we get a spiel.
I don't know if I gave them one either.
Okay.
No. Um, no, this was brought up. We've been kind of discussing it for a little while. I think last year I had actually called Christine and asked if there's any kind of space coming over here, because the emergency manager position actually was originated over here when Mr. Oberby had it. And then through different channels, I guess, it somehow ended up over into Selby. So with that being in mind, once I took this position over and kind of seen how it was going, I kind of started looking at different options, and that's kind of where the discussion came up of actually bringing the office back over here. Just not saying an accident can't happen, or an emergency can't happen in another part of the county, but with the higher population over here and actually the additional resources right here at my fingertips, too, it just seemed like a benefit to be able to bring the office back over here. So I was like, that's not me, right? Okay. And so with that being said, I approached my commissioners and kind of said, hey, this is what I'm thinking. And then in return, they said, well, if you can find something, you know, let us know. And then that kind of started the conversation with Chief Delroy over there about, hey, you have two offices over there. Do you think that would be something that you would be interested in, you know, having me in there? So that's kind of where we're at and where this lease came up, and I'm just asking that you approve it. And then I think as January 1 was when it'll actually take effect.
Correct.
I think there's gonna be some things that are gonna happen once, you know, if you guys do approve it, that we're gonna get that office kind of up in shape so that when that January 1 comes in, it'll be an easy transition just to bring my stuff over and be in there full-time, so.
Okay. I've had a chance to kind of read over the contract. It's $4,200. It's a one-year lease. It looks pretty standard to me. Does anybody have any questions, commentary?
It was prepared by our attorney.
Okay.
And then I thought, like, when it gets closer to that year-end, if everything's kind of working good and stuff, just maybe revisit with Heather and kind of get something else, maybe a little bit more long-term, so we don't have to do it every year or two, but just to kind of get this first year under our belt, so.
Okay. Probably be bigger than what you've gotten out, too, right?
Yeah, I think anything would probably be bigger than what I have right now, if you haven't been to my office, so.
I've seen it.
Yeah, yeah. One, two people max is enough, so.
Any other questions, comments? I guess I'd look for a motion to go ahead and approve this contract.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Riker?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, second item, new business, approved revised Sheerhow, excuse me, approved revised Sheerhow rental fees and deposit. You've kind of got the new pitch in your packet. I'll let the committee talk about it a little bit and their recommendations. So Jeff, Jade, Heather? Go ahead.
Okay. We met and discussed the different rental fees for Sheerhow, just to try and make it a little bit more enticing to get more groups to use the facility rather than having it sit empty. And we did decide to go with two separate fee structures, one for for-profit organizations and one for non-profit organizations. Just with the non-profit organizations, we'd like to be able to help them keep as much of their money as they possibly can, but also we do need to be able to cover the costs of our janitorial staff as needed and the electricity. The for-profit organizations, we would, we did decide to add in setup days and cleanup days so that there would not be the full rental fee for all of the days. You would be allowed up to two setup days and one cleanup day at $50 each for the for-profit entity. And then for the day of the event or days of the event, it would be $250 as it was before. The non-profit organizations would be allowed the same two setup days and one cleanup day at $25 per day, and then the days of the event would be 125. We also did look at the damage and security deposit, and for events that are serving alcohol, the deposit will remain $750. Events that are not serving alcohol will go to $350, just because there is less potential for damage. I mean, it's not eliminated, but there is less potential. And just be, it would make it a little bit easier to get that deposit down for, for those events.
Anything else, questions? So basically, you're looking at the reduced rates and, okay.
And, and the reduced deposit for the non-alcohol events.
Which was kind of where we went when the question came up, so. If there's no, is there any questions from the council? Any more input? I guess if there's none and the committee recommends this, I would look for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Heather, call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Okay, motion carried. Up next, we have Approved Pay Request Number Six for the Airport Runway Project. $1,216,230.68. So information's in your packet, so if you have any questions, now would be the time. If not, I would look for a motion to go ahead and pay the contractor.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Okay. Up next, we have Resolution Number 19-09. A resolution levying the front footage assessment for annual maintenance on street surfaces and setting maximum annual assessments. It looks like it's 40 cents per foot. We do this every year, so let's, yeah, it's pretty much what it says. It's for street repair and stuff. So no, no one has any questions? I'd look for a motion to approve Resolution 19-09.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Landrew?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have Approved Contract with Safe Slide Restoration in the amount of $23,350. Information's in your packet, the warranty information, the pictures, and everything that they are going to repair. And this is the big slide up at the pool. So we would be signing that contract from, yeah, for $23,350. So if there's no discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve.
One question.
Okay.
Uh, once they approve this, when is this gonna get started?
We have to get on their schedule. And before we can even get on their schedule, they want 50% of their contract. So as soon as I write them a check, then hopefully, we're really hoping by the spring, but they want payment first.
So they wouldn't probably be able to start until the weather was warmer, I imagine, then?
Depends on their schedule, yeah. These people aren't waiting for work. You know, they got slides all over to fix, so.
By the time we get set up for the pool and the time they fix it's a pretty small window, then. So it could probably run a little bit into the season, I suppose.
It's possible. Like I said, it just depends on how much work they've got lined up.
All we're doing is getting on the schedule. Getting on the schedule, yeah. That's good.
So this will have a little bit better warranty than what the, it was when it was built, clearly?
Well, we checked, we actually checked with the people that put it in, and they did have a lower quote, but they weren't doing nearly the service of what this company was and zero warranty. So this company is actually painting the whole thing. They're gonna do some maintenance on it, the inspection, fix all the cracks. Just a lot better bang for your buck. And the five-year warranty is very appealing.
The warranty is worth it, yeah.
Five years, good.
It's, yeah, it's a little disappointing to see it broke so soon and then.
And these folks do slides, like the big, big amusement parks, you know, they do all those huge ones, so.
So we should be, I mean, we'll be covered pretty well for, for the five years. I mean, that's, seems like a big advance, investment, but it's.
Gotta take care of it since we got it.
Yeah, either that or not, have the slide.
Any more discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Yellowboy?
Yep.
Riker?
Yes.
Landrew?
Yes.
Okay, last item, approved health insurance renewal and HSA contribution for employees. Heather, you got a memo and some options?
Yeah, so I finally got what our health insurance is gonna be doing for, for 2020. Our health insured, insurance actually renews December 1. So the current plan that we're on with a $4,500 deductible is no longer available. They've taken it away. And they're also giving us a 7% increase and increasing our deductible to $6,600. So with that, it's an increase to the city of $13,300 per year. So my question for the council is, is we have an option that we can adjust the employee HSA contribution that the council has given as part of their health insurance package to make up for the premium increase, or if you guys left it as is, I would ask the department heads to make up the difference within their budget for the premium increase. I did reach out to the health pool to, for a quote, and they actually refused to quote our insurance because they have too much on their plate right now. I, Jesse had reached out to Sanford and Navara. They're just not even close to what we have right now. So this looks to be our best option for insurance. So that's kind of where we're at. Figure deductible again, increased premium.
So in the last go-around, we went, okay, so we did, we, we went to the $4,500 deductible, and, and I felt like, and I remember the discussion was, because the deductible went up, so we, we pitched in the $1,500 prorated HSA to bring the difference of the new deductible and what they would spend out of an HSA to be current with their old deductible. I guess the way I look at it, I don't want to take any money away from the employees. I think that's a better, it's a benefit of working for the city, in my opinion.
Right, I, I do agree that we, I don't really think that it would be a good idea to reduce the contribution that the city makes, considering that the deductible total is increasing as well. It's, that's a huge hit for, for the employees to take.
I guess my only other question would be, if each department head has to look within their own budgets to cover that, how is that gonna affect, say, a police department with over a million dollars versus a library with 125? Is that?
Well, the library only has one person on the insurance, so she's gonna have to make up 500 bucks.
Okay.
The police department, they're gonna have, they're the biggest department, they have the most employees, so they're gonna, they might have to struggle. It's something that I'll have to sit down and talk to chief and captain about and see what their thoughts are. Maybe we can do some creative thinking and see what we can do. But I'm sure their employees would still appreciate maybe doing without one thing to be able to have more for their HSA contribution.
Okay, well, I've given you guys my thoughts on it. I don't think we take anything back away from the employees, because that's what we set it up as. So I guess department head, council reps, I guess, are tightening up. So anyway, it's up to you guys which way you want to go. I'm just telling you my thoughts on the matter.
Well, I think we've better just tighten up, not easier.
So then I guess what I would just request, that the council make a motion to approve the renewal at the, the $6,600 with the 7% increase, and then either way, what you want to do with the HSA contribution. So include that in your motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion or whatever she said.
Would that be option one, Tony?
Yep.
Okay.
So the department's discretion, then?
Yeah, because basically I think they can, if they, if they kind of handle their expenditure, they can take.
And that's what the mayor kind of, in a way, roundabout way suggests? This, this isn't a fun and exciting thing, because like Heather had said, the police department with the dispatchers, you start looking at $500 per employee with that many officers, that many dispatchers, that much stuff going on. That's a huge hit if they want a vehicle or equipment or, or whatever they're looking at versus a library with one employee. So I'm not trying to pit the PD against the library, but that's.
Well, we can do some creative thinking, too. I guess I'm not too, I'm not too concerned with finding it, I think.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
You got a motion?
Yep, I just need a second.
Okay, I'll second the motion, which I'm, I want to clarify, is the renewal plan with the deductible at $6,000. Okay, I'll second the motion, which I'm, I wanna clarify, is the renewal plan with a deductible at sixty-six hundred dollars and the city contribution to the HSAs of fifteen hundred dollars per employee.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Landru?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellow boy?
Yep.
All right. Discussion and information items, we have none presented, so I'll take it to payment of the bills. We've all had a chance to review your bills in the packet, uh, it looks like we're paying one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents worth of bills, so. If there's no questions, comments, I'd look for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Landru?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellow boy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, it takes us to adjournment, so there's no other business, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Riker?
Yes.
Yellow boy?
Yep.
Mound?
Yes.
Landru?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned.